Meeting changed on him and he has to be out for work this evening, so he will not be joining us. First up, we have our consent agenda. We have the bills to pay. Any questions on the bills? We have a motion received and placed on file.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five to one. Sitting as the Board of License Commissioners, we have a peddler's license for McGrath Clambakes, 64 Halsey Street, number five, in Newport for the Beast of East Rugby Tournament, April 14th through the 15th. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Next up, we have a request to advertise for a public hearing for application for a Class BV beverage license for Salsa's Burrito Grill LLC at 108 Chase Road. The second weekend in April? April 23rd? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Mr. Kessin and Mr. Ryan was the second, and April 23rd is the date. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We don't have any six to zero. Sorry. We've had full councils for most of the time. It's very rare that we don't have everybody here. We have no minutes to approve for this evening. We have the town administrator's report. Mr. Rayner.
Good evening, Mr. President, council, ladies and gentlemen. Quick update. The ad hoc working group that was formed with respect to the short-term ordinance, short-term rental ordinance, is directed by the town council, has completed development of a proposed ordinance regarding that issue. The draft is included in tonight's backup for one of the agenda items, and we will be requesting the town council's direction regarding future consideration and public discussion of the proposed ordinance. I was asked by the town council at the last meeting to see if I could arrange a meeting between the owner and operator of the wind turbine and residents concerned with this operation. The company CEO, Mr. De Pasqual, has agreed to a meeting on April 12th at 6:00 PM here in the town chambers, and letters have been sent to those residents who have requested the meeting. The Quinnic Island Christian Academy that leases the old Cogge Shell School Building has informed me that due to a significant drop in student resignations, they will not be renewing their lease with the town on July 1st, so staff and I will start working on recommendations for the future of the Cogge Shell Building. I'd like to recognize the town safety committee for their part in earning Portsmouth a recognition of achievement award from the Rhode Island Interlocal Trust that was presented at the recent loss prevention awards luncheon. The town was specifically recognized for our implementation of new safety initiatives, achievement of procedural goals, implementation of reporting procedures, and establishment of employee training programs. I'm also happy to announce that the Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency has awarded a state homeland security grant of $10,000 a year for three years, so a total of $30,000 in grant to the town. There is no cost share required for this grant. The grant is to be used to develop incident communication plans for the regional control center, promote training of personnel and communication certification programs, and conduct exercises to test current plans and identify gaps for improvement. For about 18 months, actually a little over 18 months, select members of the staff have been involved in a leadership training program sponsored and run by the Public Sector Consortium. Our final project was presented at the Salve Regina Pell Center for International Relations and Public Policy on Friday, the 16th, and that completes that training. With respect to the police station construction project, some milestones this period, backfilling of the foundation continues. Concrete has been poured in the elevator pit, and the installation of underslab plumbing continues. The project is approximately a little over 13% complete, and overall, the project is still on track for completion, and it is on budget. Completion, as you're aware, has been moved to October due to the inclement weather we've had this winter. But other than that, there are no new significant construction or budget issues to report. With respect to our search for a new finance director, since my last report, the HR director and I have reviewed 55 applications for the finance director position, and we've selected 12 for follow-up. Two of the 12 have since accepted other positions. This week, we will hold first-round interviews with 10 candidates with the goal of bringing in three final candidates for final interviews next week. And then, lastly, we just received word today that the community development block grant program is again accepting applications from towns for small cities' community development block grants. It was anticipated that that would not open. It did just open up again today, and up to $1 million has been, will be made available to the town enforcement to undergo a range of activities. The first of two public hearings will be held at Town Hall on April 9th at 6:30 PM for the purpose of obtaining views from citizens on community development and housing needs and on program performance. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Any questions for Mr. Rayner? Ms. Pedro.
Could you repeat the date for the residents in De Pasqual, item number two?
Absolutely. It will be here in town council chambers on April 12th at 6:00 PM.
Thursday, I believe, right?
That's a Thursday.
And the Christian Academy lease. So we had a plan with them for...
Correct. They were on a year-to-year lease, and we had a plan with them.
To reimburse us for the...
To reimburse us. There's, other than the rent, there's about $6,000 left to reimburse the town, and of course, that reimbursement will be made before the end of June.
Oh, so they will reimburse before they leave?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have an expected completion date for the repairs on the dog park?
I'm not going to bore you with... I just got an email on that right before I came in. It looks like the small dog park, the dog park section for small dogs will be opened up here pretty quick. There's some ruts left to be fixed, and then with respect to the large dog park, there's some fence posts that need to be repaired and some fencing. I don't have a date for that, but I anticipate that'll be pretty quick, right after we open the small dog park. So I imagine within the next week.
Within the next week?
I'm hoping within the next week we'll get the small dog park open, and immediately we'll work on the large dog park section.
So maybe like two weeks for the large?
That's, yeah, I'm hoping sooner, but I think two weeks is conservative.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, sir. We have removals, resignations, and appointments. First up, we have two removals from the citizens interested in the Comprehensive Community Planning Process Committee for Mrs. Dees and Mr. Machado. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. And we have a reappointment through the planning board. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Old business number one. Mr. Mankey, February financial report.
Good evening, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen. Really nothing significant to report. Revenues are slightly above what you would get at the eight-month period, and we'll probably see a slight increase in next month because we just did the licensing at the fire department this past weekend. So we'll probably still be ahead on that, and expenditures are right on track. We keep monitoring the departments that are above 67% for expenditures, and the trend is that their expenditures have been decreasing, so that's a good sign, but a lot of them were front-loaded, so we expect it to see that. Other than that, there's nothing else to report.
Questions for Mr. Mankey?
Thank you.
Mr. Kessin?
Thank you very much. Mr. Mankey, at this time right now, because you've just produced your report and you understand that income's ahead of schedule, would you happen to know on hand what the cash balance in the general fund account is? The general fund balance account?
Off the top of my head, no, but I can get that to you tomorrow, sir.
Thank you. Second thing is the contingency fund still shows $50,000 in revenue as contingency, and I thought we were going to hardwire that into the available, and I thought we were going to move that into the Prudence Island, into the budget under the Prudence Island. It still doesn't reflect that, just as a note.
It's a timing issue, but I will look into it this week.
Thank you very much. And the finance, is it 82%? Can you give me an idea of what, why would that hide?
Because at the beginning of the fiscal year, we prepay a lot of our insurances, and that's why it's high, and it has slowed down over the past few months, so we're basically catching up to where we should be.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Any questions? None? A motion to receive and place on file?
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Old business number two, request approval to enact FY 1213 warrant investigation recommendations. Mr. Rayner?
Yeah, I presented the report, my findings at the last meeting. We did not make that discussion action. The action part should have been council decision or guidance regarding the recommendations that were made. Those recommendations were to track, well, this one is already being done, tracking capital projects in separate fund lines, transfer $916,214.54 from the town capital projects fund to the 1213 warrants fund. That will zero out that fund. Consolidate existing deficits into a distinct account, and then apply a percentage of every future general fund surplus to the deficit account until that deficit account is liquidated.
Mr. Kessin?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I brought this up a year and a half ago as we started down through the budget cycle, and I didn't vote for the budget because I felt that we really need to commit to paying off this deficit fund, which really isn't a deficit fund. But if you look at my follow-on agenda item, number three, the inter-fund balances, it, to me, and then I got to tell you, I'm more than a novice at this, the money seems to be missing in my study of the fund balances over the last, I think I started in 12, nope, I didn't. I started in 13, and I went to 17. So I would not like to move these deficits into separate accounts. We can almost see them the way they are, other than the, you can't see the 1.1, so $173,339 in the capital projects fund. Money's flowing in and out of that account quite rapidly. It's going to get contaminated again, I think, because I haven't, I don't know, and I won't know, probably because I won't be here, until the audit comes out for this year. We've added $10 million to that account, the capital fund project, because it has the police station in it. So my motion is to commit $250,000, which would be the, I believe, paying off these $2 million over 10 years, out of the budget, a hard item in the budget. That's my motion.
$250,000.
$250,000 for the next 10 years.
Oh, second for discussion?
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Pedro.
So if I understand, Mr. Kessin, you just want to commit $250,000 every year to pay off, so basically, you're in agreement about paying off...
Well, I'm not in agreement...
The deficits, however, you don't want to lump them into one fund. You want to pay them off like one at a time.
I would like to pay them off in increments, like we would a normal bond, over 10 years.
Right, but you don't want to, you don't want to, you're not in agreement with number three, which is to consolidate them into one account?
No, I'm not. I think they really need to be paid off. They don't detract from our bond rating. And again, if you look at the inter-fund balances, I'm a novice at this at best, and we have due from funds and owed to funds of 26 million, which is quite a bit of money in my book. But I think unless this council commits to paying these off, if we try to do it on having a surplus, I don't think we've had one in the last two years. We had a surplus this year because we used some extra money. That was already in the fund balance, in my opinion. I might be wrong. There could be a difference of opinion between myself and Mr. Rayner, but having this account around since 10 and 12, or 12 and 13, and not resolving it, I think, in my mind, is a mistake. That wasn't me. I didn't make any notes. And that would be my reason to commit in the next 10 years of budget to pay these down. That way, there, it's a, it adds to the fund balance automatically. The budget might have to be trimmed a little bit. I currently don't have an idea what the budget is, but in my mind, if I borrowed money from my 401K, and it produces a negative balance in that, they want me to pay it back. I have the same kind of municipal finance at home. I have a large sum of money in a 401K, and when I borrow it, everybody wants me to pay it back. It doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't go against my credit rating, but it's the right thing to do. Hence, my motion.
Ms. Rayner?
So this deficit has existed for at least the last five years, and it is not an account that is accruing interest. The town is not paying extra money because of this deficit, so we have been telling our auditors for the last five years that we have a plan to pay this down. It does not hurt our bond rating, it does not hurt our finances. I get a little worried about committing that deficit every year because it actually is such a, sort of a, I find that a little too rigid, and it would actually constrain our other budget considerations. I'm kind of more in favor of Mr. Rayner's suggestion that we should structure our budgets to answer the surplus, and then apply a percentage of that towards this amount again, since it has existed for five years without hurting our bond rating, without accruing extra expense to the town. It's not new spending. We should pay it down in a more opportune way that allows us maximum flexibility in formulating our budgets and not constraining us to a certain amount every year. This is my feeling about it. Mr. Rayner, I have a question for you. What is the likelihood, do you think, that we would be able to structure our budgets over the next few years to create a surplus or to allow a surplus that we could draw on to pay this down?
We would have to, obviously, some priorities would have to be made. We're just wrapping up the budget for next fiscal year now. You will see that there's, there are a number of drivers in this budget that have already required us to trim a lot. We're putting the Prudence Island Transfer Station into the general fund. We have $500,000 due on the police bond note. There are higher than number, because of, we're now shifting that balance in the workforce from the people who are on the 401, and the older generation who are on the defined benefit, and as we go into collective bargaining sessions with those unions, the people who have the defined benefit are starting to retire much sooner than expected because they're very worried that the younger force does not have the interest in maintaining those benefits, and that they'll negotiate those away, so they're retiring to lock those in. So that has, last year, we budgeted, I think, $40,000, $50,000. Because of the number of people that have retired, we're already up to $200,000, so we had to put more money into that account, or that line item. So a long answer is, right now, I have, we have been doing nothing but budget work for weeks. I don't know where I would get $250,000 to do this, but we could...
The union issue will be that naturally resolved itself?
This will resolve itself. I would recommend that perhaps we take a portion of the surplus this year, and then in the out-years, where we have more time to plan and get, we know that we're facing this, we can do this in the out-years. I would not recommend we do that this year until we at least pay down some of that debt service payment.
Mr. President, in all fairness, this has been on this council, it's been in front of this administrator, this finance director, for over a year as we discussed last year's budget. I got to believe it's prudent to pay this off. I don't know whether we suspend doing a couple of capital projects. Maybe it's the prioritization that Mr. Rayner talked about. It would require... The thing that would bother me is if the, during this 1112 presentation, and I'm going to do this from memory, and I hope Mr. Rayner bears with him, I think he even said that there could have been $1.1 million, and I'm going to use a round number, that was Ryback funds that were possibly, had a clerical error. So I don't know that there's not 3 million that's in question. I'd like to have that resolved, but more than that, and I understand we're already heading into the budget season, we've already, we've already lost 12 months. And again, going back to action item number three that I have on the agenda is this inter-fund balance. It's the IOUs. I understand it's a standard practice where they put an IOU in the general fund because they accumulated some cost for a capital project, and then going to move the bond money in later, or it's the bond money, and it was a little bit more, and there's an IOU that's going to come out of the budget in over four years. I think that's happened a couple times. I'm not sure. I just think that it's not prudent to somehow hard, hard cost this 2 million, and I don't know whether it's three. I'd like to hear from Mr. Rayner in a second. Maybe it's time for Mr. Rayner to tell me about the Ryback money. Was that, is that missing? Is that misplaced? Was that just a keystroke error? Because when you stood at the podium, you also said there was possibly another 1.1.
Yeah, it was, there was a Ryback loan, $1.1 million, that should have gone to school capital projects. That is that 1213 warrant fund. That Ryback loan was applied to town capital. The money that was budgeted that year for town capital never got transferred into town capital.
So when was the Ryback money? Because I looked through the 10 years of financial data on these two accounts I asked for, and I could not find what date that 1.1 Ryback went in. What year was that? Do you remember?
I believe it was 2013.
So we've had an accounting error for that long, and we don't feel a need to straighten it out?
Of course we do, but nobody prior to this has done it. In every audit, there's always been a statement, it's always been identified, and there's always been a statement saying that we're going to address it. Last year, when this was brought up, my task was to come to you with a recommendation on how to address that. My recommendation was going to be to use surplus money, as available, to pay that down. Then, in January, I was asked to investigate it, was I investigated the cause of that. That led me to, that led me to find that the Ryback money did not go into the school capital account, the 1213 warrant fund. It went into the town capital account. That same year, the town capital account went from a $27,000 balance in a positive to an over $900,000 deficit, even with the Ryback loan money that was put into that account. So if we take that Ryback money out, so right now, you've got a $900,000 deficit that's sitting in the town capital fund, which gets obscured over time because you have more bond money that goes into the capital account...
Absolutely. I've been watching that.
And charges, the appropriate charges that should have been applied to that Ryback money were being charged against, those expenditures were being charged against that 1213 warrant. So now you've got a 900, over 90, you got, I'll just round off. You've got almost a million-dollar deficit in that one, and you've got almost a million-dollar deficit sitting in the town capital fund. So it's about $2 million, 1. whatever, 1.7, 1.8 million dollars. So the recommendation is zero out the, zero, because the Ryback money, we did get it. So zero out the warrant fund, take the money out of the town capital fund, and apply it to that warrant. We know that there's going to be, it's not going to erase the deficit, but it gets the deficit in the right fund. Then, it doesn't matter, and we'll explain this when we get to inter-fund accounting. So you're suggesting that we just keep them separate. It's fine, because it's all pretty much automatic. But we need to know, I mean, we need to zero it out. I mean, that was my task, figure out what's going on with the 1213. I figured it out. It was a lot of work. We got there. I know what happened, and I think it's appropriate to zero out that 1213 because we shouldn't be spending against the 1213. We're not spending against the 1213 warrant anymore, but that negative balance just sits there year after year after year. That's all I'm suggesting, is that we zero out that, put the deficit in the column that it should be in, and let's come up with a plan to pay that down. We don't see that negative balance in the town capital fund right now because, as I said, over years, we've put capital money in there. But that balance, that deficit, will show up again because we don't have any plan to borrow money over the next few years until we get that debt service paid down. So as we pay for the police station...
We're going to run out money.
This fiscal year and next fiscal year, that original deficit is going to show up again.
It's going to show up because you have the money in the capital improvement fund right now.
Correct. And again, if we don't, if we don't pull up our strings now, between now and when the police station's done and the final bill's paid, had we done it last year, it'd be a half a million dollars in that budget, right? If we had this solution when we created the budget last year, it'd be a half a million dollars in last year's budget and this year's budget against what we believe is $2 million, correct?
Yeah, it's possible we could have done that. What I'm saying right now, though, this year, because of what we did with the Prudence Island Transfer Station, because we have the note that we have to start paying off because of retirees, and the growth in revenues is not projected to be as high as it has been in years past. There hasn't been as much development. The budget needed to be severely constricted this year. Even if we were to erase all the capital projects, zero them out, don't do any capital projects, don't buy any trucks, don't fix any buildings, don't do anything, that's still only a little over $250,000.
So my suggestion...
Both of our auditors in the past two years, or in years before that, have said, develop a plan. It's not hurting you at this point in time.
Correct.
Our bond council has said it's not hurting us at this point in time.
Correct.
If we have this plan to utilize half a surplus or 70% of surplus to go to it, it'll help make up for that deficit from money that was accidentally moved, on an accounting basis, to our surplus.
It would demonstrate to, obviously, future auditors, but also, if we were to borrow money again, it demonstrates to the rating agencies that we're following through with what we said we were going to do. We didn't constrict ourselves in those disclosures, and again, nothing, none of this was ever hidden. This is in all the reports. So we did get our bond rating based on our fiscal health with the acknowledgement that there is a fund with a deficit, and that the town is going to develop a plan to pay it off, which is what we're discussing now. What I would suggest is that what we do, again, one, I don't want to constrict future town councils, but at the same time, I don't want to constrict this budget that we're working on right now. We will turn the budget over to you next week, but it's a tight budget. I'm going to be completely forthright with you. I don't, I don't see where I would get 250,000 more dollars out right now. I don't see how I would do that. I, I don't see how I would do that.
Unless we did something drastic and went to the cap or something like that.
Yeah, okay.
Question about item 3, oh, sorry.
So what number do you feel comfortable hard coding into this budget as a payoff? Because I don't, I don't think going to a, to a surplus, when we haven't had one in the last two years, that's real. We had $1.2 million from the school department last year, correct? There was a deficit, something went on, it's in the audit report.
Well, we, we had a real surplus two years ago, but it was used to pay off something else.
Again, let's, let's get real.
Okay.
Talking, we didn't have one, right? Because it got used somewhere else. This year, we didn't have one, right, in '17?
No.
Because we took $600 out.
Okay.
And we used it again. So the hail mary approach, other than hard coding into the budget, what number are you comfortable with putting in if you don't like 250?
If, if we hard code in $100,000 every year, it's gonna take us 18 years to pay it off. If we have surpluses over the next five years and each happen to be 300, $400,000, and we apply 60, 70, 50%, whatever it is, we're doing what the accountants want us to do and the auditors want us to do, we're doing what our bond agencies want us to do, and we're not hamstringing our, our budgets going forward. Now, we can take $250,000 out of roads, we could take, we can go to the cap.
We were already at a, we were already at a million at the end of '13 into the roads and we backed down to 750, right?
800, right?
800. So I want to pass this piece of paper around to the council, it happens to be page 22 of the, of the MDA report that was originally part of this agenda item two weeks ago. I think I have one from Mr. Reiner. Because it all involves this inter-fund balance. And do we agree that we put $10 million?
Let's, let's take a timeout for a quick second. If you're gonna intermingle the inter-fund balance with this item, why don't we just open up?
I just want, I just want to understand this, I want to understand this concept because this is, this is inter-fund balance stuff. I don't want to go to agenda item 3 because it's gonna help me vote on number 2. If you read the first, first page of this audit, it says, "The $7,896,614 current fiscal year increase in the fund balance of the town's capital fund project, one of the major funds, is due to the physical bond issuance net of the related capital expenditures." That capital bonded number, was that 12.5, the total bonding? It was the...
Not, definitely that wasn't all capital, though.
Yeah, but that's where that money came from. So what that's saying right there is that money that was bonded was put into the town capital's project fund.
But shouldn't it have been $10 million and now it's only 8 or 7, 8?
It was, yeah, but this is for fiscal year ended June, so that there, there were expenditures in the capital fund prior to the end of this fiscal year.
$3 million?
Well, not...
$2 million?
Yeah, but I think there was 600, I mean, I'd have to go back to the loan issuance, but it wasn't...
It was $75,000 they issued the loan, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to go back and look at the numbers, I don't have the numbers in front of me, so, but what, all that's telling you is that the reason why there's that much money in the town capital fund is because there was money put into the capital fund as a result of the bonding. That's all that's telling you.
But it all, but it also corrected the $2 million that was lost, correct?
No, no, that $2 million is never gonna be corrected unless we, we decide to correct it and pay it off. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
So that's really, so that's really 10 that's in the, in the police bond?
I, I'd have to take a look at it.
No, obviously, some of the expenditures for the police bond were paid before the end of last year.
Within a half a million dollars?
I don't know the exact number.
Okay.
We paid engineering fees, we paid architectural fees, we paid upfront costs to get the police station built.
And I thought that was also bonded.
Everything to go with the police station comes out of the $10 million that we did bond.
I thought that came out of the...
So the payment of those would have come out of there, it would have been transferred out.
I thought that came out of the 2002 money, or the $6,221,500. When you look at those bonds issued on, like, one was January 30th, I think, the 2.2, and then there was another one in, in '15. I'm ready for a question, for the question, Mr. President.
Okay.
To see the flies or...
So currently...
Oh, so we bonded before...
I thought we all bonded, we bonded for the study of the police station, we bonded for the preliminary numbers, and I'm confused, I don't mind. At no time do my fingers leave my hands. I, I just don't understand why we're almost 2 million down, and if everybody's happy with doing another alternative, I don't need to get beaten up anymore trying to get $250 committed out of the next year's budgets.
My concern with the 250 is that it's gonna really hamstring budgets going forward, and we're gonna lose some of the priorities that we've set forth. And because of what we have been told from the auditors, both, the bonding agencies and our bond counsel, we're better off setting a plan that utilizes surplus money than actually budgeting in a hard number.
And what if there's no surplus money? I tried to, I tried to set a plan...
That's, that's the concern.
Then it doesn't get paid down that year. But it's not physically hurting the town, fiscally hurting the town.
But it doesn't...
The money, the money that was supposed to go pay off these bills got transferred into the rainy day fund. We can take it all back out of the rainy day fund and pay them off right now, but that will do more damage to our bond...
So, so does that mean...
Ratings than paying them off over time.
Understand, understood.
So I, so again, does the, does the rainy day fund, does the fund balance have, does the fund balance have 7.896, 614 million dollars? Or does it have something short of that, like $5,665,665?
I mean, I don't, that sounds more reasonable, I don't know what the balance, the fund balance is right now, but that 7 million, that, that's sitting in the capital fund. The fund balance, the rainy day fund, this is, this is what we've been trying to build up over years. I mean, could we, could we go to that right now and take the money out of the fund balance and zero out the deficits? Absolutely. But it was a recommendation from our bond counsel that, it wasn't a recommendation, it was, it was advice, that, a caution, that if you do that, that will potentially affect your bond rating going into the future. And again, the, the advice, which I've received over and over again from state auditor, former state auditor, auditors, finance directors, is just do, and bond counsel, just do what you said you were gonna do.
I understand. Again, Mr. President, on page 30, which is the balance sheet for government funds, it was part of the original package, this states the total fund balance at $8,911,595.
If you remember during the presentation of the audit, some of that money that is in that fund balance is restricted, so the amount of cash that you have available that you can actually dip down and take is less, and I think he, I'd have to take a look, I think it was more about 5, 6 million dollars.
There's 6, there's $6,12353 that's unassigned, there's a signed of $9,376, there's a committed 1.261, 145, and there's a non-spendable of $729,716.
So I believe those uncommitted funds are what you could dip into right now.
There is no restricted fund listed in the general fund on, on the balance sheet on page 30. I'm ready for the question, Mr. President.
Mr. Sors, do you have a question before we take a vote on this?
Yes, Mr. President, Larry Fitzmaurice, 50, Kristin Cork. Just a quick observation, one is, I certainly agree that we shouldn't be pulling down, withdrawing money from the fund balance, that's obviously got a bond rating issue attached to it. The other thing is that the proposal, as I understand it, is to redirect any surpluses, it's gonna have to be in the municipal budget, at the end of the year, into paying down this roughly $2 million shortfall that we have in the capital fund and the...
That's, that's not the motion currently on the table? That's the recommendation from Mr. Reiner, the current motion on the table from Mr. Keston is to, is to budget $250,000, well, it'd be $200,000 if it's 2 million over 10 years, unless you want to do 250 over...
I just did, thank you for the correction, I'll speak...
That's, that's, that's the one that's on the table now?
Understand.
Okay.
I'm talking about the recommendation.
Okay.
My concern with the recommendation, thank you, is that this sounds like it's going to zero out any growth in the fund balance over the next few years, number of years.
Only, only if we do the 100% route.
Yeah, exactly.
We could do a 50% route, we could do a 70% route.
My recommendation was to use a percentage of any future surpluses and apply that towards that deficit, so, you know, whether that's 50%, 60%, 20%, a percentage, so that we can still grow our fund balance at the same time that we're paying this deficit down.
And your percentage that you want to use is...
50%.
50%?
Of the fund balance.
Of surplus.
Surplus.
So if there's a $100,000 surplus, 50 goes to pay off the debt and 50 goes into the fund balance.
Okay, I certainly recommend to the council that we follow the motion on the floor because that, that's a predictable thing, and this won't get lost in the wash as we, you know, wade through the future budgets, like many of these things sort of have a tendency to do. Obviously, the problem we have before us got lost in the wash as well. So I would rather have a more formal process instead of waiting on surpluses which may or may not develop over the next few years. Thank you.
Again, I understand that 250 might be a little stiff, but I figured a 10-year note, and that would be the interest included, the bond money and the note itself, I mean, the interest.
At the end of the current fiscal year, the NSI fund balance of the general fund was 6, 9, 1, 2, 3, 5, 7, while the total fund balance of the general fund was 8, 9, 11, 5, 595. So we have roughly unassigned 6, 7 million bucks, I'll round up, and 3 million assigned, again rounding up.
Okay.
So that, the unassigned fund balance is about 12.4% of our FY budget, where we want to get to 16% at some point by new Gatsby rules. So the motion on the floor?
So I may have one question?
Sure.
Because I think I'm gonna vote against this anyways, but, I mean, for it anyways. The, the question I have is, when Mr. Reiner did his 1213 analysis, he predicted, and I didn't get a chance to run through all of that paperwork, because I've been working on this for quite a few weeks, that this, this $1 million in the capital fund, we'd find it in the police budget, is it his estimate right now that we can still pay the $10 million to complete the police fund with this $1 million that we, that we found in the...
That's my whole point. The money for the police station was put into the capital fund.
Yeah, and I asked you that if we're gonna, and I asked you if we could set that in a fund by itself so we could monitor it.
It's still being monitored.
It's still being monitored, and that's, if that goes to your, your next question about inter-fund accounting, those funds are tracked, all that money goes into one, we don't have 99 different bank accounts, we got one bank account. So we track them via funds, and inter-fund balance accounting requires you to do sister accounts for every single account, you have to have a debit to, a debit from, and a credit to for every one of those. So we are tracking the police station construction, but when you look at the balance of the capital, the town capital, that's gonna go negative because that negative that has been obscured by money going into the capital fund makes it look like there's a positive balance there since 2014. And that's gonna show back up again when we spend down the money that was borrowed for the police station, so, because we never paid off that deficit.
But, but...
But the money that we borrowed for the police station has no possible way of falling into this $2 million deficit that was created and...
No, that, that money is for the police station.
Exactly.
It just makes it look, it just, you gotta go into the general ledger and go into the count keys to see where that deficit is.
The, the main key to take away, everybody needs to take away here is, the town has paid all of their bills.
Yes.
And on an accounting basis...
I wouldn't think that they would...
Right, no, that's fine, but I, this, there's a lot of minutia that's going around here, I just want to make sure everybody's aware. We did, we have paid all of our bills, but on an accounting basis, we have accidentally moved money that was to pay off a bill into the general fund even though we used cash to pay off the bill. So the general fund has more money in it than it should at this point in time, we are gonna pay it off over the next few years, the deficit.
The fund balance has more money in it than it should.
So, the motion on the floor is to earmark, that's a bad word in politics, but earmark $250,000 until this is paid off.
I thought, I thought slush fund was a bad one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think slush fund's worse than earmark, but earmark $250,000 for the next X number of years until this balance is paid, paid off in full.
That's, all in favor of that motion, correct?
Okay. Well, I'm just reiterating the motion, I just want to make sure that, your motion is clear, that, that's what you're looking to do.
Commit to...
Because it's not, it's not 10, I mean, it's not gonna take 10 years, but, so it's X number of years until it's paid off.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Nay? Okay.
Mr. President, can I make a motion?
Hang on.
Mr. Reiner, what, what number, as Mr. Keston asked earlier, would you be comfortable with to earmark? I know you want to do it by surpluses, but my concern, and Mr. Keston's concern, is that we may not have surpluses.
Yeah, I, and I, I get it. I mean...
With 50?
Yes, $50,000 right now, I'm very comfortable with. $100,000 is pushing it because now, I mean, we're already dipping into other, we've cut back capital quite a bit, and you'll see the budget next week, it's tight. I can do, I, in my mind, I can picture $50,000 and I know where it would come from. $100,000 is really tight, above $100,000, I'm out of schlitz, I don't...
So what if we did both? If you're comfortable with 50?
I can present, I can present both to you.
50% of the surplus.
Could I make a motion?
I could do that. I would actually like to make a motion to...
Mr. President, may I ask you one question?
Hang on, hang on a second. Are you gonna ask a question or make a motion?
Make a motion.
You're gonna ask a question and you want to make a motion. So let's start with your question first and then we'll go to motions.
So my, my question is, should this decision wait until we actually see the budget? When we get to see it too?
Either way, I'm gonna have to prepare a budget, so if it waits and you make, you make the decision, I'm gonna have to redo the budget, so it doesn't matter.
So let me ask you this question, is there any contingency in the other budget?
We zeroed out the contingency.
Like...
We zeroed out the contingency.
Okay, then I understand why you are where you are.
We could still make the motion to do the 50, 60%, whatever number you want to come up with, and then look at doing 50,000 in, in the budget. Doing motions.
Dr. Ryan's first.
Okay.
To debate on it for...
That's fine.
So I, my motion would be to identify a surplus each fiscal year and assign 50% of that, that surplus to paying down this deficit fund, which has been on the books for five years, is not accruing interest, does not count, cost the town any extra money, and really what we're trying to do is just balance our books. So my motion, I guess, the short motion, is to identify 50% of a surplus amount each year going forward to pay down this amount.
Until payoff, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion from the council, Mr. Keston.
So in the first budget meeting, Mr., Mr. Ryan, are you identifying the surplus at that point?
I think we...
Or are we gonna wait in...
Or are we going to wait until the auditor identifies the surplus at the end of the, at February after the year closes in June? Is that when we're going to find out there's a surplus?
I think when we find, when we have a budget and we can see what the numbers are, we can automatically assign 50% of whatever, whatever surplus there is to paying this amount down.
You're not going to find that until after the audit's done?
You're not going to find that during the budget phase.
Our, our decision would direct the auditor to say, okay, you finished with $100,000, we're putting 100 here, 50 here and 50 here.
That would be my contention.
That would be, so it wouldn't be necessarily identifying it into the budget, it'd be assigning 50% of any yearly surplus.
Surplus that exists, yes.
Would be more likely the motion.
So six months after we have end of year, will deter, somebody will determine whether or not we have a surplus, and then that surplus, 50% of that surplus, six months after end of year, will get applied to the budget?
To deficit.
To the deficit.
To the deficit, yes.
The account balance.
Right.
I don't want to call it a deficit, because it's really not.
It's an accounting deficit in it, on paper.
A clerical error.
Right. Any other questions or comments from the council, Ms. Pedro?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. I would additionally, I would like to create a line item, I guess, in the budget for $50,000 to be used to pay down the deficits.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion from the council? Mr. Polison?
Just to ask Ms. Pedro, so are you saying we would earmark 50,000 per year and then that would be in addition to 50% of the surplus?
Yes, in addition, yes.
Until paid.
Until paid, sorry.
That seems like a logical way to go, in a defined way of raising the money.
Yeah, because in case we don't have a surplus.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Greve? You're standing there pacing, I'm assuming you want to ask a question or make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Tom Greve, 110th Air Drive. I just wanted to say that I think it's important, whether it's $50,000, $75,000, or even $25,000, quite frankly, to have a portion that is continually earmarked, your words, for this, so it shows the auditors and the S&amp;P and everybody else that we are working on it. But more importantly, I think, is to make sure it's not lost. Finance directors change, administrators change, the council certainly changes, it gets lost if it's not a regular line item, if it's not a line item this year, it won't be a line item next year. If it is a line item this year, it may be a line item next year. I think it's important, whatever small amount you have, to make sure that there is an amount in the budget to pay this down, so that it gets handled, because for five years it hasn't.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Ujifusa?
Just a question, there are more than one, there are four, five recommendations, so is it possible to amend the motion to say that all of Mr. Rayner's recommendations be adopted besides the one we're speaking of that's...
Let's, right now, let's, let's work on one, let's work on this one. First, we have a amendment to the motion, which is to, I'm going to use the bad term again, earmark $50,000 in each budget going forward until it is paid off in combination with...
To create a line item?
Create a line item.
To create an expense to pay it off.
All those in favor of the amendment? Aye. Opposed? Now, those in favor of the main motion as amended, which would be utilizing 50% of any year-end surplus plus the $50,000 line item to pay down this deficit, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Now, recommendations, number one, are already done, correct, or are in process, Mr. Rayner?
Correct. I would like to make a motion to transfer the 916 to 1454 from the Town Capital Projects Fund to the 1213 warrant.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
One second, that's going to, that's going to make, that's going to make the 11, the 1213 warrant look like a minus $2 million number?
No, that will zero out that warrant.
It'll put that into...
So that warrant's done.
So it'll be the capital fund, that'll, will be sort of money towards the capital fund to clean out that deficit.
So we have this into one account. And now we'll not be able to see it until we get below $2 million, right?
But it loses there as a item in the budget.
No.
You won't be able to see the balance anymore, because it'll be in the capital fund account.
You will see that deficit in the audit ending fiscal year July 1, 2019.
It wasn't, the capital fund wasn't shown as a minus in the 17 audit?
Because there was $10 million in there from the police station.
As we draw down that police station, that deficit is going to show back up again.
I'll tell you, this feels like a nut in a shell, but...
It is. It's unfortunate that accounting is, it's not as simple as balancing your checkbook, municipal accounting. Okay, so the motion is to transfer the 1213 into the capital fund's project balance, fund, excuse me, using words interchangeable, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five to one.
That's just the school warrant, the other warrants are still going to be shown because we haven't voted to put those into the account.
Correct.
So that's just the one that was the school problem.
So just to go down to recommendations, one is being taken care of, two we just did, deficits to old town warrants and deficit to town capital funds should be consolidated in one account, you're already working on that.
That's the one that we're not comfortable with.
No, that's the one that Mr. Keston recommends, we just keep the funds the way they are.
Right. We've done the percentage going forward, and all town capital projects should be tracked and accounted for in separate town lines, as in, we're doing the police station on its own budget if we do.
And number three...
On the school building, it's on a, its own budget.
It's, it's almost inconsequential, so number three just makes it easy because you can see it all in one pile, but if we want to do it, keep the funds the way they are, that there's absolutely no problem with that, you see it in every audit anyways.
And there's not that many left.
And there's not that many left.
But it does come a little bit in that you're going to have to divide up any percentage of any surplus now to two different amounts, one to go through each deficit account, yes?
No.
Although, I mean, the big deficit will be in the capital fund, there's a few warrants, but I think most of those are cleaned up now, so I, in all, I would withdraw number three, now that we've done number two, I think the rest of it becomes much easier to track.
Okay. And we're not doing warrants anymore.
We're not creating warrant accounts?
We're not doing 700,000 every year for the state department. Okay.
Number five?
They're already doing that. Right, Ms. Menke? We are going to move on to business, new business, excuse me, old business, number three, a little bit more about accounting. Mr. Keston?
Again, I think, I think we see this, and again, the paperwork I've shown you, it's been in the backup, and what I see as stated fund balances, I think I see the $2 million in these funds, and, and I guess, I understand the borrowing, interfund balancing, we've, I've got it in my own home, you know, you can use your 401K, you can go to the bank and have a mortgage, I think everybody understands interfund balancing, and yes, I'm still floating, I'm not over my, I don't have a negative balance more than my total worth, so if Mr. Rayner could help me understand why we put 12, $10 million in and only end up with, and this might have to be a side article, why we put $12 million in the general capital fund and only end up with a 7, 8, 9, 6, 614?
Because when that...
I'd like to see those extra $2 million, because...
When that money was put into the capital fund, the capital fund had a negative?
At least one, and I don't understand why it's showing this two, and maybe it's just you and me spending an hour in your office, because I, looking at this data for the last 12, the last years, I've got stated balances, and, and again, it's, it's on page 15, when Marcus did it in 12, it's on 15, when Marcus did it in, you know, 13, and now in 17, I, so I'd be willing to let this continue to the next agenda if I don't get this answered one-on-one from Mr. Rayner. Mr. President, to shorten the discussion for tonight.
So you want to table this on the next agenda if need be, if you don't get your answer?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty convoluted that, again, I don't understand it, and it'll answer one question, let me look at the fund balance from 17, that's 15, I don't understand in the fund balance behind the sheet when we, I'm going to do this from memory because I can't find a piece of paper at the moment, that's what happens when you're a paper guy, so we have a fund balance for the, for the town, and I think you confirmed it in 17, where we have about $5 million of real fund balance in the fund balance.
$7 million.
$7 million.
Well, it says seven, but we...
Six, $6,912, $1,2353 is our general fund balance, with a restricted fund balance of an extra $3 million.
And out of that same, and out of that same fund account, we have $11,743,540, that's owed to other funds.
No, the general fund...
This is what it says directly out of page 72, no money's owed to it, and 11 is owed out of it, and right now in cash, and that's what I'm assuming, this is against...
Do you have page 72, Mr. Rayner?
Yeah, it was part of the backup.
Yeah.
We're confusing two different things here, and you're, you're looking at, you're thinking about cash accounting, and you forget that town accounting is accrual-based accounting.
Yep.
The other thing you have to keep in mind, and this is why we attach this sheet back here, interfund balance accounting, it's, it's a way to keep your accounts separate or to account for all your funds that you set up, when they're all going into same, when the funds for those things are all going in the same account, the same bank account. So for instance, just oversimplification, we have 99 accounts, but we don't have 99 bank accounts.
Correct.
So what this does is, when you set up the program, and it's all done automatically, when you set up the program, you set up a sister account, so that every one of them has to have a twin account, so you've got a credit to and a credit from, so money is moving in and out as it's budgeted or as it's spent, we buy a truck, we buy supplies, whatever it is, money moves in and out, but it has to be accounted for, there has to be a credit to and a credit from, and it balances automatically, so this is all automatic with those account keys that we've done, so...
So, so help me here with the page 72 that's up, why doesn't that have owed to it the 52 million that we create in taxes then?
Unless we haven't collected those yet.
Well, it's owed, it's not there yet, right?
Yep.
I don't understand, I don't understand this sheet at, at the end of year, right? I don't understand why this sheet exists.
I know, but there's, there's intra-accounts and there's inter-accounts. Intra-accounts, you know, that's where you see other financing sources, other financing uses, that's kind of like the credit and the debit for intra-accounts. Inter-accounts are due from other accounts, due for, are credits and debits, and again, it's, this is a snapshot of time at the end of the year when they did this, but this, one of your concerns was it looks like it's growing, well, one, you're adding more funds, these are the funds that are being tracked right here, and the sub-funds, and plus, the budget's getting bigger, so there's more money going into the bank account, and then you've got a tran, you've got, you have all these funds and you're keeping track of the money that's going in and out of this account. If I put money into the truck account, that money's got to come from the general fund, go into the truck account, so there's, there's a credit now, and then you set up a debit because I bought the truck, and that's what, that's all this is tracking. This is not telling you that you've got extra money to spend, and this is not identifying money that's missing or money that's owed, this is just a way to balance.
I don't think there ever is money missing.
But you had made the comment that you think you found the $2 million, and that's not what this is telling you, all this is telling you is that our credits and our debits balance, that's all it's telling you.
With, with the minus in the two accounts we originally had?
Correct.
Well, that, yeah, of course, because there's, those have a debit, but the plus is somewhere else, and in our case, it's sitting in the fund balance.
So we're confident, I guess I'm, I guess I got to be confident that we're not doing more things in the capital project than we committed to, and the second thing is that this fund balance isn't leaking into the operating budget?
Completely separate, absolutely not, you, one, the auditor would pick that up in a heartbeat, and two, it would just, it would so convolute the accounting, we, there would be no way to report it, you have to be able to show that there's, there's a balance.
So the, so in the, in the 1213 warrants that I saw, where we charge, where we charge police overtime, social security, and Medicare into the capital accounts, that is the, the, the police cost DPW, and DPW was there too, which I was surprised, but there was police and DPW salaries in the capital, in the 1112 warrant account, when I looked over the 10 years, and it wasn't a lot of money.
I'd have to take a look at that, maybe it was detail pay that was charged...
It was 999 account money, and I don't know what that means?
No, not 99 account money, that's general fund money.
9999.
Yeah, that's, now, it's, that's general fund money, and then you, and then it goes into these sister, you know, accounts, so you've got the debits and the credits, so money has to flow in and out, so that's probably money that, what you're looking at, I haven't seen it yet, but you're probably looking at money that was taken from the general fund and put into the payroll account line of the police...
Again, this discussion can have a whole, offline, offline, because when I saw those, I didn't understand that either.
We'd be happy to explain it, but I don't have it in front of me, but I can assure you...
You sent it to me, and I just went through all of it.
Sure. Okay. So you want to table this, or you want to just bring it back on another day if you'd like to?
I'll just bring it back on another day if I don't get the answer I was looking for, I'm pretty sure I'm going to get there.
Does anybody else have any questions on Mr. Keston's? Okay. Moving on to old business, number four, request council decision not to hold a public hearing for proposed short-term rental ordinance, Mr. Rayner, as you brought up in your administrator's report.
Correct, what you have before you, the ad hoc working group has worked over a number of sessions, and staff has worked assiduously in the background to prepare a proposed ordinance regarding short-term rentals in Portsmouth. We are presenting this to you tonight for your review, so that we can meet the deadline and the task as submitted to us by the council to get it to you by this date. We, there is only one, and I'll highlight on page three of the ordinance, there was one area where we feel that this is, we could not reach consensus on section 8A, there was a codicil placed in there, let me backtrack just a little bit, what we're trying to do is...
I'm going to stop you for a second anyways.
I just want, I just want to let you know that this is the product that we've come up with, there's, there's 99.9% consensus, the section 8 would have to be discussed in public session and agreed to by the council if you choose to bring it forward.
Okay. I know there's a lot of people here who want to discuss the ordinance itself, but the way the agenda item is written is, we are having a discussion this evening as to whether or not to have a public hearing, not to discuss the actual ordinance itself. I would like to sit down with everybody and go through the ordinance, probably in a individual meeting and not during a regular council meeting, because I think there's enough meat on this bone to go for a little while. So, because of the way it's worded, specifically discussion action on whether or not to hold a public hearing, not to discuss the actual merits of the ordinance, good, bad, or indifference, all we can do tonight is set a date, if the council's pleasure is to set a date. Does everybody understand, it's just state law, and I don't want to get caught in a ringer. Does everybody understand it's just state law, and I don't wanna get caught in a ringer? Ms. Ojafu, sir.
Um, Mr. Rayner, when would the earliest date possible be to have this hearing?
We're gonna, there'll be a CDBG. If you wanna do it in your own special meeting and not outside, a, a council meeting where this is the only agenda, then I would suggest the week of April ninth or table it until May after we get through the budget hearings.
Well, the ninth is a regular council meeting, but we can just clear that agenda.
That's what I mean, well, we could clear that agenda on the ninth and do it just that night.
And that would give us enough time to advertise it a few times.
Okay.
And I'll have to be advertised.
Right.
Then I make a motion that, so that the ninth would just be the regular council meeting with them?
So the ninth would be a regular council meeting where this is the only agenda there.
We would limit the agenda just to, to this and other businesses, like licenses and stuff like that.
Right. I, I make a motion that we hold a hearing on this proposed ordinance on April ninth.
Can we, can you amend that motion just to put the advertising in there as well for the clerk to advertise it?
Yes.
Dave, okay. Everybody's okay with the ninth? He's gonna be here anyways, but-
So, well, we can't adjust, we can't talk to the ordinance, but we also, as a council, didn't set up any kind of, any kind of parameters. And, and we, we've heard this, the need for this for over a year. And I don't think there's immediate resolution the way the ordinance is written. So if changes need to happen to this, they're gonna happen during the hearing of the ordinance?
Yes.
Oh, boy.
Right, 'cause, 'cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna get to the hearing and then say, "Well, you know, we can't make changes," or "It's too late to make changes," or "If we make changes, then it's gonna be, you know, take too long."
The idea behind the hearing is the-
Yes, I-
We'll adjust it, we'll, we'll make sure the item is listed as discussion and action and approval of new ordinance. We can make any number of changes during that ordinance hearing.
Which is covered in the schedule.
Um, so you said April ninth?
It's a regular council meeting night.
Yeah, it's a regular council meeting night, so you-
We'll just limit the old and new business, other topics, and we'll continue to do our regular business agenda, paying our bills, doing licenses and that stuff, but try and limit the other new business and stuff to this item, because it'll be a long-run item. You know, if, if there's a, an agenda item that comes in that Joe Smith wants to rent the Glen, we can do that one pretty quickly. But no long-form items or, or presentations.
This is gonna take off.
Mr. Fitzmorris, I would call on you first, but there's two lovely young ladies in front of you who I think want to say something. Yes or no?
Yeah, I would love to.
Okay, come on up.
So thank you for the opportunity. Uh, my name is Samara Zebian, and I'm a homeowner at one sixty-five Homack Avenue in Portsmouth. I came down specifically for this particular ordinance.
She's doing me one quick thing.
I'm sorry, oh, I'm a short-
It's not for, it's not for us, it's for them.
Also vertically challenged.
Yeah.
Um, so I specifically came down for this ordinance discussion, respectfully sat through the first hour and a half of discussion. Would like to be able to share what some of my concerns are. If this is not the right time, that's very frustrating, because I personally drove four hours to be here. I live in New York City full-time, but do own property here. So, um, I think there has to be better visibility into these types of ordinances that have significant effect on all of us, both the neighbors as well as the homeowners. Um, and, you know, I'm happy to share very quickly what my three or four things are that I'd like you to consider, but I also respect the process, so.
Mr. Gavin, how far can I go within?
Well, the item, it does say discussion slash action. I, I, I think the rich intent was just not to have two public hearings.
Right.
Um, but there's nothing to preclude you from-
There's also nothing to preclude you from putting things in writing if you wanna email back to the council as well.
Sure, but I also didn't need to drive four hours for that.
I did the same drive today, yesterday and today, down and back. Um, if you wanna go for a couple of minutes, that's fine.
Okay, great.
And with respect to the fact that you live out of town.
I appreciate that, thank you very much. Um, you know, I, candidly, I thought the ordinance was fair in many regards. I do respect the need for neighbors to have a place that they feel comfortable in, that they've signed up for, and to have visibility into what's going on in their respective neighborhoods. I would just ask you to consider a few things. One is that the ordinance signals that the document will be implemented upon passing, but there really is no visibility. It's practically blind on how long it would take us to go through some of the protocols that are required in the ordinance. So for those of us that are trying to capitalize on the high season, that could be very damaging to us. So I would ask for some type of reasonable grace period for us to comply with the ordinance. And I would offer perhaps April of twenty nineteen would be a reasonable time for us to all be compliant. The second item was that a formal inspection is required of our homes, which I think is perfectly reasonable, but the document is also silent on how we would go about requesting that inspection and how quickly we could expect response and for there to be enough resources in the town to help all of us get to that compliance. Eight A also lacks some specificity. So specifically, it's asking us to be compliant with our septic systems and that that would be some type of grounds for how many people we can accommodate. We would ask for a bit more information about what the city's code requires, and ultimately, again, how much paperwork is required of us to be able to get some type of reasonable quick response. So if the document could be a little bit more specific on what is required of us to get a practical response from the inspector, that would be very helpful. And lastly, eleven B, while I think it was very well-intentioned to have a public display of a sign that has our personal information on it, I hope you can appreciate what kind of safety concern that poses. To publicly display that this house could be vacant at any one time, I will speak for myself as a single homeowner, I do not want that kind of information displayed, but I am more than happy to alert my neighbors that that house is for rent on occasion and supply them with my personal information. So I think that is ultimately what was trying to be solved for, is that there's a way to contact us if there's a problem. I think it's a bit unreasonable to be basically beak, you know, have a beacon basically for the entire community to know that. So that's really it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzmorris? There you are.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the ordinance as written is, is very, very good, but I think it didn't deal with half the problem, and that is the people who rent more than thirty-one days, without getting into a discussion, which I know you don't want. My recommendation is that we reconvene the study group with the town staff, who's done, by all accounts, a pretty good job on this, very good job on this, and have them try and solve that problem so that it's in the ordinance that is presented to the council for consideration, apparently sometime on the week of April ninth.
On April ninth.
On April ninth, thank you.
On that actual council meeting, yes. Thank you, sir.
Because I don't really think, I think it does a very good job, but I don't think it deals with temporary people who are there more than thirty-one days.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to agree with, he just stated that I do do a short-term summer rental, and they are, I've never had any problems with the people there. There are Bob Brooks, I live at, I live in Portsmouth, one forty Mainway Terrace.
Thank you.
I have a rental property in Portsmouth as well.
Where is your rental property?
In South Park Ave.
Okay.
Uh, I do find that, um, there are a lot of problems with other rentals out there that are, well, it's college kids. Uh, people that stay at my house, they're typically about sixty years old, they have adult children, a couple of grandkids, they stay there for a week, enjoy themselves, and respect their neighbors. But there are some other rentals that are nine months long that have serious issues, so I don't think this is addressing the problem. So I think somebody should consider that.
We will look at all that on the ninth. Thank you, sir.
Maureen Kane, twenty-nine Beet Street. I also have a short-term rental. I would like to know what the makeup of the study group was in terms of interest. Were there short-term landlords on the group?
There was a short-term landlord on the group, there was a real estate agent on the group, there were private citizens, and the bulk of it was staff, fire chief, police chief, town solicitor, town planner, myself. There were two council members, and I think I covered, there were about twelve people on it.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, I believe I read of somewhere in the paper or someplace that there are not many complaints that come into the police department about rentals, if any.
That's correct.
So how is this going to, all these fines, I mean, I really read about the draft very briefly. How is this going, how are you going to be fining anyone when no one's making any complaints about them?
I don't think the intent is to fine people. Those provisions are in there to ensure compliance.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one of the recommendations from the group is that we would hire a, a compliance firm that would do the studying. The compliance issue that would, is a host compliance firm that we would suggest hiring. A host compliance firm would do the monitoring on all the appropriate sites, the short-term rental sites, social media advertisements, so on and so forth, and alert the town if a short-term rental that has only been certified or registered for a certain occupancy, if they're advertising that beyond the number of bedrooms that they're authorized and inspected to, or the number of occupants that they're authorized for, then that would be something that the town would have to follow up on.
Okay. And I, I agree with some of the previous two speakers about the other rentals in the area. I mean, you, apparently you're concerned that somebody who's gonna spend seven days at a rental has the, you know, proper CO2 monitors and fire, you know, fire alarms, et cetera. What about the rentals that have a hundred people in them at any given time for parties? And no one's worried about them registering as rentals, or it's just a question of, of having adequate fire alarms or CO2? Because there are, I mean, it seems like there's no problem with the short-term rentals. If nobody's complaining, why do we have more regulations here proposed? But there are some real, you only have to drop, go up Park Avenue, particularly on Labor Day weekend, and see hundreds of people and then roaming to another place on Riverside, and cars blocking all the streets and everything else, and to see police presence there. So I don't know, that's all I have to say at the moment, but I-
Excuse me, Ms. McCabe, can you tell me where your rental property is?
One Coral Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
James Moore, two seventeen Indian Avenue. That's changed since the last time I was here, because I just moved into my new house that we built and-
Finally finished?
Finally finished, after living the first twenty months in Portsmouth at eighteen East Terrace off McCrory. Um, I was a member of the committee, and I, I'd like to congratulate, I think, the effort that was done, it was done in good faith. And I agree with the town administrator's comment that we are ninety percent. He said ninety-nine. I, I would suggest less than that, because I'd like to address, very briefly, the question of the so-called two additional persons. The fundamental statement of eight A is that the minimum occupancy, maximum occupancy should be two persons per bedroom. And then there's a reference to people under six being not counted as a person, so children are not counted in that. That gets you six people in a typical three-bedroom, let's say in Island Park, which may be have septic for those six people. But then it goes on to say that, oh, there can be an additional two persons in any property who may spend the night. And I think this flies directly against the two fundamental thoughts that we, we were guided by. There's a, a document called The Practical Guide to Effectively Regulating Short-Term Rentals. It's a terrific document. And their two basic themes are, while it may only seem obvious that only enforceable legislation should be adopted, it's mind-boggling how often this principle is ignored. And secondly, another common mistake is for cities to adopt complicated rules that are hard for citizens to understand and follow. The two additional persons rule potentially puts the city in position of allowing more people in those properties than are allowed by the other parts of the document, which say you can only have as many people in the property as the septic approval would allow, or you can only have as many people in the property as there is available parking for that property. And that's connected to the number of bedrooms. So the two additional persons, in, in a, in a sense, puts you in the position, whether you have a one-bedroom, or two-bedroom, or a three-bedroom, of allowing the people in that, in that property to violate everything else in that, in the document. So with regard to rent, maximum rental occupancy limits. So it makes it complicated, and it makes it probably difficult to enforce, because what Mr. Rayner didn't say is, but alluded to, was that a fundamental thought of the group was that using an organization such as Host Compliance, which happens, by the way, to provide oversight and management services for more than a hundred and ten cities in the United States, including cities as large as Virginia Beach and Palo Alto, California, with regard to short-term rentals. But this allows the citizens to effectively interact with the town so that the police are not obliged to, to monitor what's happening in your short-term rentals. In other words, a citizen can take their phone, take a photograph of the number of cars that are there at seven o'clock in the morning, upload that into Host Compliance, and to deliver it to Mr. Rayner the next day. Host Compliance can monitor on a daily basis who's actually offering apartments, sorry, houses for rent, and whether or not those houses comply with the city regulation. All of that can be done, I think, Mrs. Ojafu figured out while we were there, for about ten thousand dollars a year. So I'm back to my, my point. It may sound like a very small issue, this two additional persons, but in fact, it complicates the regulation seriously, and it makes it very difficult to enforce. Finally, just a thought, Mr. Crosby was the one who was most adamantly interested, I think, during the discussion in the two additional persons phrase. I know from discussions subsequently that all four members of the citizenry who were appointed to the council are opposed to the two additional persons phrase. Mr. Crosby suggested, and I apologize for going on a little long, but Mr. Crosby suggested that the main point would be that the renters, that is, the four people in the two-bedroom who actually were, were the legal registered renters, needed to have the flexibility to prevent a person who might be intoxicated, have used drugs, or otherwise be a danger to himself or the community from leaving that night. And this would, this two additional persons phrase would give them the flexibility to allow them to spend the night. And if that's really the reason you wanna have two additional persons, then we should say so in the regulation. We should have something that says if a majority of the renters believe that someone's impaired and therefore shouldn't be on the streets. See where I'm headed? That, that you then put the renters in, in a kind of police mode with regard to the additional persons should be allowed to stay if, if the real reason for that language is to protect the citizenry.
And Mr. Moore, I think-
So I, I don't mean to-
Full disclosure, that was an example that was used, the thrust of the conversation was guests, but your point is what-
Right, I understand. And, and finally, Middletown actually went through this discussion with regard to whether guests, if you look at their document on June seventeenth of last year, and there was a long discussion at council about whether guests should be allowed, and they came to the same conclusion. It were, it becomes almost impossible for the neighbors to understand whether the addition of people on the property are the registered renters or the guests of the registered renters. And if we're relying on the neighborhood to self-enforce this document, I think it, it goes to the heart of whether that can actually be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Last one.
Hi, I'm Ashley Kern. I live at thirty-four Hillside Road. I'm actually the property manager of a couple of out-of-state owners, so I am registered as their in-state representative with the state and with the town hall. I know this is open for discussion as to whether or not there should be a public hearing. I would just like to say I don't- I would just like to say I don't know why it wouldn't be open to a public hearing, because there are a lot of people here in the public that it affects.
The point is not, if there's going to be an ordinance, there will, of course, be a public hearing. This is merely to allow the council the decision to either table the discussion until later, or if they decide that there is going to be an ordinance, that it's something they want to pursue, then they would have a public hearing. It's not a matter of, we're going to keep this from the public or not.
The issue is, is that we also have our main budget, which is the thrust of most of our hearings for the next three months.
Well, in that case, then, I would like to first ask, how charging the owner $100 per bedroom might prevent the tenants from causing noise, or congestion, or pollution? Charging the owners, that isn't going to change the tenant's behavior. What I might suggest is, if there is a complaint, I've never had a complaint myself, to, if there's a police or a call to the, to maybe fine the owner of that property, and then it's up to the owner to explain to their tenants, as I do in my rental rules, you know, maybe if there is fine, then the owner can take that fine out of the damage deposit, so the tenants understand that they're not to cause noise, or pollution, or do that. You know, it's up to the owners, their responsibility to make their tenants aware of what the problems are, and that they could be fined. If you hit them in their pocket, the tenants aren't going to make noise, or pollution, or overpark, instead of hitting the owners with all these regulations and fines that probably will cause them, for my owners, they're not going to want to rent. They'll just save the properties for themselves to come visit in the summer.
That's a business decision that the homeowner's going to have to make.
But then that also affects a lot of us, our property managers--
I understood.
--our income.
Understood. And this is all discussion that we're going to have on April 9th.
Okay, so there is going to be--
If there's four people, excuse me, three people, four people--
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is my first--
If there's, that's fine. If there's four people up here that agree to have the meeting on the 9th, then yes.
Okay.
And I'm pretty sure you're going to get six.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McCabe?
Oh, gosh. It's my opinion that someone mentioned reconvening the group. I think it was you, Mr.--
Nope.
Hamilton.
Mr. Fitzmaurice.
Mr. Fitzmaurice, oh, yes, okay. Yeah, my concern is that we're going to get to the public hearing, and there's going to be a lot of changes. I would suggest reconvening the group, and perhaps having some of the, the original group did have, how many citizens did it have on it? It was quite a few.
Yes, one, two, three, four, five, six, about seven total, I think.
Yeah, seven citizens, and then, and then one short-term rental owner.
Here's my concern with that, just, and I--
Because, yeah, well, I like some of the suggestions, and I'm thinking in the S, in the, I'm just thinking about the time period, it's already--
Do you have two weeks?
No, no, that's not what I mean.
I mean, that's how much time we have--
Yes, I understand, that's how much time we have, but if we go back and make a lot of changes to this ordinance, it's, then we're going to have to come back again, I don't know, I'm just thinking that the season's going to start pretty soon, and I really--
We can make, we can rewrite the entire ordinance on April 9th if you wanted to, and still put it into effect, whatever date was set.
Yeah, we're not going to know how many amendments and people will make until we actually hear them make them.
I would prefer, Mrs. May, I would prefer to put this quote-unquote "out on the street" for everybody to be able to read, digest for two weeks, and then come have an informed discussion, than to put together the group again to make 100 changes and come back in two weeks--
I'm not saying 100 changes--
Just, I'm exaggerating for effect. I think we're better off putting this out on the street, so that everybody who either owns a property, or is a neighbor to a property, or an interested person can read it and come make their comments like several people did this evening.
So, this was posted on the web, right?
It is on the website, yeah. Yep, that's, that's it right there.
Just wanted to get the ball rolling a little bit faster, but, okay.
All those for holding a public hearing on the new short-term rental ordinance on April 9th here at 7:00. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. I'm assuming we will see most of you, if not all of you, on the 9th. We are going to move on to old business number five. Request for revision of fee schedule annual licenses. Madam Clerk, you have a update for us? So any of the increase comes back to the town? For the liquor license adjustments? Everybody, we tabled that from last week, so we just need to approve the adjustments that the town clerk has requested, because she came back with that information.
None of this money goes upstate?
Yeah, they have their own pie, piece of the pie.
And it's a much bigger piece.
Yeah.
These fees are actually-- So we're certainly not out of line with the rest of the--
Hope to revise the fee schedule as presented.
Any further discussion?
Mr. President, based on discussion we just had earlier tonight, I'm going to vote against this, only because I think, after talking with, getting my ears chewed off by two, two businesses in town that own a bar, with the, and I, and I think you said it was the health, it was the--
Department of Business Regulations, and I hadn't--
Biggest Regulations. And I hadn't been able to find it, because Google didn't work for me.
It's not working very well for me either.
Right. So, it's my understanding that the business regulations instituted a mandatory insurance for these businesses to carry a million dollars, which is in the vicinity-- Well, we hadn't confirmed that, and I thought you said originally a million.
That was, that one I got pulled up was South Carolina--
What is that, liquor liability?
Yeah, it's a liquor liability.
It depends on the--
Depends on the establishment.
The amount, the amount of the establishment does.
Right.
That's what it'll--
And both of these gentlemen said it was a million.
Well, the establishment's doing pretty good.
It's a, it's a, it's a fee imposed on a, on these people from, on a state statute, and I belong to a place that has pretty reasonable beer, and when you buy him out, it's four times the cost. So at this point, I would not be willing to support this motion.
Okay. What, is that Class, Class B?
I think it's a full license with food.
Yeah.
Is the two organizations--
Class BV.
Class BV. Did you compare these with the, with Newport?
Yes, we're still lower than--
We're still lower than Newport. Of course, we don't do the business that Newport does either, but--
Right, and I think Newport's liquor license is worth money, as opposed to any of them--
That's right.
--town of Portland that I don't think you could sell.
You cannot sell.
We can't sell them.
In Newport, they can.
That's true.
There's a huge difference in the, in the pricing that way.
And they also base it on the size of the restaurant, how many people--
Yep, yep.
Right.
And we don't, yeah.
It's a tiered setup, right. Which again, would be maybe more palatable to the people I talk to.
I don't know if $1,700, what's the, what's the change, going from what to what? I don't think the $300 is going to cause people, it could, to change my beer from $3.50 to $4 bucks, if it does.
I think the insurance that they--
Insurance, yeah, well, that's--
Was a lot more, so--
Yep. That's, they, they need to call their state legislators to fix that one. But, a million dollars liability insurance could very well come in handy for them someday.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the fee increases?
Who was the, who was the motion?
Mr. Gleason and Mr. Ryan, seconded it, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five to one. I got to catch my math again. New business number one, discussion action included. Introduce and explain the Fix Our Schools Initiative, request support. How you doing? Haven't seen you since, well, last Monday.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the town council. My name's Eric Castlehurst, I'm here with Fix Our Schools RI. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization, and we support an effort to make a once-in-a-generation investment in Rhode Island's public school buildings. We are committed to making sure our facilities adequately prepare our students for the, for the 21st century. I'd also like to introduce my colleague, Lisa Nelson, who's here with me tonight, who might be able to add some insight where, where needed. Lisa and I were here in Portsmouth last Monday on a walking tour of your middle school. We accompanied state and local and school officials through the school, and after that, the press was also there. And a, an article was printed in the Newport Daily News, and I believe the Portsmouth Times, that went over the, the project, or the, the plan that's been presented, and that same night, your school committee passed a resolution in support of, of this plan that's been presented in the, in the current state budget. That's under consideration at the State House. So, we provided you with an overview presentation, I won't necessarily review that unless you had some specific questions, but we wanted to make sure that we gave you as much information coming in as possible. And then we've also provided you with a, what we're calling a one-pager that breaks this down. So, and we've also provided you with a draft resolution, which is the same resolution that the Portsmouth School Committee passed last week. And so, I'll very quickly go over that, I want to be aware of your time, and respectful of that. And so, in the end of 2017, the Rhode Island Department of Education released what it calls the State of Rhode Island School Housing Report. This has also, also has the nickname of being called the Jacobs Report. Jacobs Engineering actually went out into the over 300 schools across the state and did an actual assessment, and they identified more than $2.2 billion of facility deficiencies across the state of Rhode Island. And that's a huge staggering number, when you think about that. But there are 39 cities and towns, there are 36 school committees. When we look at what that means just for the town of Portsmouth, we're looking at $52 million, and that is also a staggering amount of money when you think of what you're, what you're working with as a community. And so, and so from there, a plan has actually been put into place. One, that we prioritize our school buildings, and we bring them up to a standard, a bare minimum standard of making our schools warm, safe, and dry for our students. And then from there, working towards becoming 21st century facilities for 21st century students. So, in the budget that has been presented at the, or proposed, rather, at the State House, there are two articles. Article five proposes a general obligation bond of $250 million that's put on the ballot in November for the voters across Rhode Island to, to vote up or down. And to support Article five, there's Article nine. And Article nine would, this, this would help cities and towns finance these much-needed repairs by requiring an owner's project manager, and an owner's project manager oversees and represents the, the cities and towns through the process. And it also requires a commissioning agent, which would ensure proper installation and operation of technical building systems. These are cost-savings efficiency measures that are put into place to save cities and towns money on their investment. These are things that would be covered under the $250 million bond. This would also establish statewide standards for facility maintenance to protect your investment. We currently do not have a statewide standard for facility maintenance, and this would actually create that. So that way, we don't end up in the same situation where we are now. We want to be very clear that we are not going around to the cities and towns and pointing the finger of blame, or trying to fix blame, we just want to fix schools, and we want to support this plan, and we want you to also support this plan. The thing that actually is most enticing to most cities and towns and school committees is, is what it actually means for you, should you choose to take advantage of this if it passes. This would temporarily increase the state's reimbursement share of building-related costs to incentivize cities and towns to move forward with these repairs. So, what does that mean? So currently, the, for Portsmouth, your reimbursement rate is 35 percent, this is based on the housing aid. And you would be eligible for up to 20 additional percentage points through this program, which would increase your reimbursement rate from 35 percent to 55 percent. And if you apply that math to any of these line items that apply to any of these varying schools, you can see that there's, there's some areas to save a lot of money. And the other, the last thing I want to say is that these costs are going to continue to increase every year that we don't act. If we just stay right where we are, these costs are just going to continue to increase. As I said before, we don't want to go around, we are not going around and trying to fix blame, we want to give cities and towns the tools necessary, we want to make sure that the state gives the cities and towns the tools necessary to be able to plan, and to execute, and be able to afford that. And we ask that you join your neighbors across the bridge in Bristol, they were the first town council to support this resolution, we would ask that you be the second, and join your Portsmouth School Committee, as well as the East Greenwich Smithfield, North Smithfield, Middletown, South Kingstown, and East Providence School Committees, who have also passed similar resolutions. I can take any questions, or--
I was waiting for you to ask that question, or just stop. So, the phrase "up to 55 percent" was not used last Monday. It was, you would be eligible for the 55 percent.
So, there are different--
I'll explain why I'm concerned.
Okay, yes, please do.
Does the phrase "reddited stepchild" mean anything to you?
Wait a minute.
Sorry, Paul. We have, here in Portsmouth, done a very good job working together with our school department, the town council, the school administration, the town administration, in maintaining our buildings, getting them to a level, not where they need to be, but we're getting there. We have done that primarily without a lot of support from the state. In the meantime, we're getting whacked $250,000, $300,000 a year out of our school funding formula. So the impact on our town, and our taxpayers and our residents, has been extreme over the past eight years, that we've had this school funding formula decrease. I like to call it the inequitable funding formula, I know there's a different name for it, but it's pretty inequitable. We have a lot of transient students that we take care of, that the funding doesn't follow, which it's supposed to. We have, I did look at the pictures, Mr. Vadney, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but do we did not replace the heating systems in every single school in the past two years? And one of your pictures shows the old furnace at the high school, which has been replaced.
Those pictures were taken directly out of the Jacobs Report?
Correct.
And so if there had been some improvements made since the Jacobs Report was completed last year--
These were done before the Jacobs Report, we just didn't remove the old furnaces, because it was too darn expensive to get rid of them.
Okay.
Like at the middle school, I think the school was almost quite literally built around the furnace that's as big as this room. No sense removing it, the high-efficiency stuff's behind it, and it's working great. As, we didn't, we didn't go in that room because there's still some asbestos in there.
Of course.
My concern is that if we do support this, and it does pass, that communities like Portsmouth get rewarded for doing the right things over these times, as opposed to other communities that may have not been so efficient or done the right things and spent the money on their schools like we have. schools like we have. I'm tired of being penalized for doing things the right way here in Portsmouth, and I want to make sure that that's not an "up to," it's, we're going to get 55% back because we're ready to go. The school department has a list of things that need a new roof, that need new windows, and we're ready to go, and we would like the full reimbursement, not, oh, they're rich in Portsmouth and they can afford it. I'm tired of hearing that. We have plenty of people who are living day-to-day, and we need to make sure that they're taken care of because guess what? It's their taxpayer money, too.
Excuse me. I hear exactly what you're saying, and when I say "up to," it's because there are different line items or descriptions within the, within Article nine that describe the incremental five percent point increases. So if you can show, and you would with your building committee and by community, you would be able to put the effort into your plan to actually include certain criteria, you'd need to meet certain criteria, to show that you're going towards priority one and priority two areas of current deficiency. And so like, we're talking warm, safe, and dry. So you would have to meet a certain criteria, and then you would qualify for an additional five percentage points. And then if you can show that you are putting in a certain percentage of your project into STEM and STEAM-related technology, then you would receive the five percentage points, so an additional five percentage points. And there are two other, off the top of my head, I just don't remember what the two other ones are, so Lisa can come?
So based on, if we're going off of this report, we're out of luck on priority ones because we don't have any.
You do, unless?
Unless this chart is wrong, I see nothing under priority one under current conditions.
So under priority one, and that's actually one of the things that I wrote down, because it's so little on the chart that you can't see it, but there's $188,000 worth of priority one need. And priority two is $15 million. And when we talk about priority one and priority two, and that particular percentage point, those five particular percentage points, that is the combination of priority one and priority two. It's not just priority one, priority one and priority two. And those are considered deficiencies that are related to what's been dubbed as warm, safe, and dry. So you have almost, you have more than $15 million. So you would more than qualify if you were able to show a certain percentage of the project.
I want you both to be aware that I'm not directing this at you because obviously you're just here to get kicked.
So to reiterate, Mr. President, I want the council to be aware that the additional, the "up to" or the eligible for additional percentage points for your reimbursement is not based on wealth. It's based on the projects you choose to do. And reiterated in Article nine are several examples of those projects because they have been prioritized. One is obviously the warm, safe, and dry that we've been mentioning. Another, two separate ones actually deal with how full and how well utilized your buildings are. Several of our buildings are overcrowded, several are underutilized. Ameliorating that to the extent where our buildings are appropriately utilized for the programs that are offered, as well as the number of students, faculty, and staff. It gets nuanced in the article, but capacity and utilization is another aspect for which you would receive or could receive an additional five percentage points towards your reimbursement. So like I said, I understand the feeling that Portsmouth has done a good job, and they have. And the 55%, even though the 35% baseline that you are entitled to is based on wealth, the additional 20% that is on the table is not related to wealth. It's related to the projects you choose to do. And knowing how organized Portsmouth has been, it's pretty likely that you would choose several of those priorities because they mean something to this community quite significantly.
As Article nine is written now?
Yes, yes, yes.
My concern is that Article nine gets changed in the next three months.
We'd hope it doesn't get changed either.
Or at 2:00 in the morning on June 15th.
Right.
The way the state tends to run things.
But passing this resolution or voting in favor of it today does not vote in favor of any edits or changes that are amended later on. It is, in fact, as the context is written today.
Do you make a promise to myself and the other council members here that if any changes are made, you will forward them to us?
Yes.
It's very easy. All you have to do is type in towncouncil@portsmouthri.com, and we get it all.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm done beating you up. Anybody else? Mr. Gleason?
I have two questions. Can you explain to me what the aspirational standards are that we are trying to meet?
So aspirational standards include making our schools warm, safe, and dry, and then equipped for 21st century learning. So when we, when the Jacobs Report identifies the $2.2 billion worth of current need to get to aspirational standards, we're talking about bringing our schools to the place where they, where we would aspire to be.
It doesn't make all that much sense to me, I'm sorry.
I can tell you a little story.
I'm offended by the whole warm, safe, and dry buzzword. It just bothers me. Are you, are the children of Portsmouth not warm, safe, and dry at this point?
I understand what you're saying, and it's those are words that, I'm sorry.
Did you find those conditions in your inspection that?
Oh, gosh, no, not at all, not at all, not at all.
This is a statewide assessment that has used in those terms, too.
And we certainly mean no disrespect at all. And Portsmouth has done, in fact, a very good job.
Okay. That's, it's just, it just bothersome to see it in there. I'll go out on a limb and say that this is Gina's way to gain votes in the state of Rhode Island. I don't like this agenda as such, that it's, that there's a political, you know, motive behind it, in my opinion. I don't see that it's a bad thing to improve our schools, but the numbers are staggering to me. I don't know how, how we're going to do it, to be honest with you.
So the, just to reiterate the how, we've identified what the need is, and then the how is to put a $250 million bond on the ballot in November, which would then be managed by Article nine, which sort of oversees that money. And so that's how we would afford it. Cities and towns would be able to increase their reimbursement from the state and make, it would make it easier for cities and towns to actually make the effort to put more into the schools. And so a town like Portsmouth that is doing a great job already, imagine what you could do.
But are we taking a backseat to the other schools that need it more than us in the expiration of those dollars?
What about Central Falls and?
We know there's other schools that need more than us, thankfully for our conditions that we're in. How does that apply to us?
It's a good question. And these are expiring incentives, so they will, they're only available for five years. So if you have your five-year plan in place, and you can get your project up and running sometime over the next three to four years and get the shovel in the ground by a certain time, and, you know, get approval from RI and qualify and meet all the criteria, then you could be one of the first school committees, sorry, first school districts in line to take advantage of the program.
Shovel in the ground?
Well, the?
Sorry, it's a construction terminology.
The projects that we would be looking to do wouldn't be necessarily building a new school. I'm looking right at Tom. But it'd be repairing roofs.
So, so the question is, is Mr. Vadner ready to stand at the microphone and tell us, out of this $51 million deficit, which ones are category priority one and all thought out and locked and loaded and good to go?
I think you ask a different question, because the school department has their own priorities, lists its own.
Yeah, I don't think it matches this one.
Outside of them wanting a new $80 million middle school, or elementary school, excuse me, does, do you agree with the $52 million deficiencies that is currently listed here?
Probably not, no. I'm not on the Capitol Committee, but speaking to my colleagues, we've had all our priority ones that we consider priority ones completed in the current five-year plan, and we'll be working on priority twos in the next five-year plan. Now, as far as the 52%, it's been signaled from the House leadership that they expect maybe dialing back the plan.
55?
Right.
Yeah.
But it's going to be dialing back, so I would be shocked if they saw anything close to it at the end. But it would be better than the 35, and that's why we accept it, because any money is better than, you know, no money. So if you get 45 instead of 55, that's better than 35.
I still have the concern that they just go back to the funding formula and just doll it out that way, and we still get the short end of the stick.
Right, and I think that's what's going to happen.
Well, the funding formula is separate from the housing aid, well, not the housing aid, excuse me, that is sort of the funding formula. But the aid that's provided, you know, the reimbursement fund that we get from building right now is 35%.
Yep.
And that will remain 35% because that current program is separate from this new program. So in the worst-case scenario, we will always get that 35%, but I would expect that we get some additional money.
Yeah, but that doesn't make me want to do this, this document whereas in front of me, right? If we're going to stay at 35? It sounds like you assume we're going to go it on our own.
We've been promised by, we said Eric, that they're going to email us if the changes.
That's what we get right now, like, the projects that are coming up this summer will be reimbursed at 35%.
Flash.
And that will be going forward here regardless of whether, regardless of this program goes forward or not. See, this new program is sort of seen as a supplemental to the core program that they have.
So you didn't, so the school committee didn't take this, find out what the priority shifts were, and adjust your schedule to make maximum amount of return?
Well, the program is, is to build new schools, and we won't be doing that in the next five years, of course.
But if this grant works, there's no possibility that we accept or we qualify for these additional steps that they're outlining here. We start a project, and then the fund runs out of money, and now we're kind of on the hook for the project, and the funds are driving. That can't happen?
That could happen.
Yeah.
But I believe that we would be in better shape to get into the front end of the money as opposed to the rear end of the money.
I'm just worried that, you know, given the magnitude of the deficiency statewide identified, the, you know, that this bond that's going to be floated could be swallowed up very rapidly.
Well, there's also the second, third, and fourth bond, because the number is actually a billion dollars. So when does this next $250 million bond drop?
See, we're actively maintaining our schools, and a lot of communities aren't. So they would have to start the day from scratch, and we actually have an ongoing program.
So if we apply, we get the money?
Yes.
The money will be ours to use, and it won't suddenly, should it?
Right, right, it won't disappear. Once RI commits the money to a project, it's committed. So once you start, you will have the money.
And remember, it's not, it's not we say, the project's going to cost us 250, and we assume 50, the state's not going to cut us a check for 55% of that. We have to pay the 250 and then get reimbursed the 55%. So there is a lag.
The reimbursement will be there.
Well, once, you know, once you?
Once we've been approved.
Right.
Yeah, because once they approve the project, the money is encumbered, so it's there, sitting in their account, you complete the project, then you get the reimbursement. They won't give it to you front of course because they want to see a complete project first.
And this bond will be gradually paid off through general state revenue, so they are better.
Yes. Again, I'm not expecting the whole 55% because it has been signaled that leadership will probably be dialing back the money going into the project. That's better than 35% or whatever it is.
Something is always better.
Anything else?
Yeah. Do you have any idea what debt the state is in?
No, I'm sure it's pretty bad. They have $250 million deficit this year. That's probably why they want to dial it back. But as it is coming through bonding, they're more concerned about the debt service.
We have an answer.
Okay.
Where we stand at debt service.
So I can't address the state's debt, but what I can talk about is bonding capacity. And so we actually asked the general treasurer that very same question. Can we afford this? And his answer was emphatically, yes, we can.
Of course he said that.
We have, we are paying off so many bonds over the next 10 years through 2036, where our bonding capacity has increased exponentially, and we want to apply our values to our, to our school buildings and to the children that go there and invest with our cities and towns and make the money.
But what stops the General Assembly from putting together another bond for, and I love URI, but another $100 million engineering lab, or Rhode Island College needs new dormitories, or C.C.R.I. is in dire need of a new building in Warwick.
There is a huge, a huge opening in bonding capacity at the state level?
Understood. I think Ms. Pedro's point to the leaders at the State House is when you're in a hole, stop digging. I think is what she's getting at. Is that where you're going, Ms. Pedro?
My colleague Lisa just said to me something which is fantastic. You can leverage your positions as town council people to talk with your state reps and senators and say, please don't change this, please prioritize this, and help us help ourselves.
I've had many conversations like that. Unfortunately, there is a gambit of power that exists inside of 295 that controls the state budget. And they do not listen to anybody outside of 295. And it's very difficult to get anything for a suburbanity community unless you win socket.
I understand. I can't speak to that. I'm not, I'm not here to speak to that.
It's just history. It's just history. Go back and look. It's very difficult.
But the way that this is currently written and presented, the checks and balances are there, and it's a good thing for cities and towns to have available to them. It's a good thing for Rhode Island's children. It's a good thing for all of Rhode Island. I also think that something that I didn't mention earlier that's really important is that this is also a plan that has the full, the full-hearted endorsement of the Newport Chamber of Commerce and also the Greater Providence Chamber of Commerce, and as well as other nonprofit organizations that deal with issues related to children, like Rhode Island Kids Count, and there are other organizations as well. So this has a broad, a broad level of support, where members of the business community acknowledge that this is good for the economy, and then, you know, obviously people in the education community recognize and acknowledge that when we put money into our school facilities, there's nothing but benefit for the children.
Mr. Castle?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rayner, if we took these numbers that are up here, and based on our five-year capital plan for the schools, is there money to bond any more than we're doing? If we needed more bonding?
Well, we could absolutely bond more. I'm not sure what the question?
We have, to go back to the general treasurer's response, we have the capacity to bond a lot more. That doesn't mean we have the?
We couldn't find the payments on 2 million, so I'm wondering what of this current deficit we could, we could fund.
I don't think there is?
And wait for the 55% return.
Yeah. I think there's a discrepancy in the numbers. I don't believe from, if, Mr. Vadner doesn't have the number off the top of his head, but I don't think we need $52 million right now in, or $9.5 million. I think the number is closer to four and a half or five.
I'd really like to have the school department tell me what that number is.
You will have that in three weeks when we do the first round of budget discussions.
If anything, that approves out of money the state's giving us for schools, and it sounds like almost anything will do that, is not necessarily a bad thing.
I'd rather they give more money to our operating budget, but we won't go there.
True, but that's not on the table right now.
So I'm done beating up on poor Eric and Lisa. And, you know, you can tell Governor Raimondo that President Hamilton says hello. But we had this discussion in Learning Center A2 on Monday, when we did the tour. I am in favor of the resolution, just because I want to know when it changes, and Lisa has promised me to send an email. But I need a motion from somebody else, because, you know, we have Robert's rules.
I move that we approve the resolution recommended.
Is there a second? Okay. Mr. Roberts, quick question?
Peter Robert, T. D. Amron Avenue. One thing I haven't heard here, and it's the most important thing for our schools, we should stop putting metal detectors in, and that's not on this at all. I haven't heard a thing about it. And roofs, you could patch a hole, but kids' lives is very important. Another thing with our schools, if you drive to any school, you can drive right through the doors. There is nothing in front of those doors to protect our kids. And there should be a row here. The second row should be in between the front rows. And this is what needs to be done first. Never mind fix a building. Our kids are important, and they don't notice. I don't care what you listen to, on TV or anything else, they do not talk about the metal detectors will stop them from getting the weapons in the school, and they're walking right in with them. And our kids are not being protected. So let's get something going here to where we tell the state to let's do it. If you go to the State House, you have to go to a metal detector. If you go to a court, you have If you go to a court, you have to go through a metal detector. They're taking care of their kids. No, they're taking care of themselves. We need, if there's this much money, the first thing that needs to be done in every school is protect our kids. And they don't notice, and nobody's telling them this. They think it's all because somebody owns a gun. If you look at the rate of how many guns go to a school, it doesn't even rank up there, and especially rifles, okay? But that's all they're being taught, okay? I've owned weapons my whole life, starting from six years old, and never shot anybody, okay? The problem is, they're getting into those schools, and nobody's doing anything to stop them. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd just like to make a comment. I know I'll be seeing this on the ballot in November. I have no doubt about that. But I think it would be, you know, most resolutions we have passed are a show of support by a council for a certain item at the State House. I think it would be more important for us to not to -- for people to -- I'm not going to vote for this, because I think it would be more important for people to say, "Well, I didn't Portsmouth vote for this." And Keith could have that same conversation that he's had already about how we're treated at the State House level, or that we've already done our work, you know? And, you know, to Mr. Roberts' point, we have started those safety measures, which when my wife was on the school committee 12, 14 years ago, they were talking about. We're finally getting around to doing it, and it's way too late. But just my opinion, I think it would show more importance on the town of Portsmouth if we did not, you know, approve this resolution. Thank you.
Okay. You have a -- Ms. Dufuska?
I would just say that I think it's really important to look at this in some ways very simply. This is a chance for our public schools to get more money, and our school committee has voted this resolution out favorably. I believe they thought about it, and they support it. I would support it for that reason as well.
All those in favor of approving the resolution? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion fails, three to three. But you're more than welcome to come back.
Thank you. Before I go, I just want to point out that when I went to the middle school, I was very impressed. I had to stand in front of a camera, ring a bell, then I was buzzed in, and then from there, there was presented with a row of glass doors that I could not get through, and I had to go through an office and then scan my license and get a sticker with my picture on it in order to take a walk on the tour through the school. And I found that to be very impressive, and but once again, Portsmouth proves that they're ahead of the curve a lot of the time. And so I commend your town and your school committee and your school district for that, and would also just add, while you continue to consider this, hopefully, we can come back and have this discussion again, that the issues that he was talking, this gentleman was talking about, bringing metal detectors in, that could actually be part of -- if that's what your community decided was actually something that it wanted to do, then you could actually make that part of your project. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next up, we have correspondence, which are ironically, resolution supporting a referendum for the general obligation bond from both Smithfield and Middletown, along with Middletown's Gunfree Schools, and opposing binding obligation and continuing contract continuations, and a letter of thank you for the Martin Luther Kings Community Center. I have a motion to receive those in place on file.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Future meetings. On Saturday, the council will be meeting an executive session to have a mediation session with the police union. And then April 9th, we will have minor business and then a discussion of the short-term rental ordinance. And then the 23rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th, we'll be doing, starting our budget discussions, and we'll have our budget books Monday or Tuesday, Friday.
It'll be early next week.
All right. Is there any other business for the council? So we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.